This conference will now be recorded.
Hey folks, we're just waiting for a couple more people and then we'll get going here momentarily. Peter, it looks like you've got some artwork there behind you. Um, did we lose Dan?
What, I'm sorry, Mayor?
Are you on, Dan?
I am.
Okay, good. I didn't see you on the, on the screen, but it looks like Kerry?
Yes, I'm here.
Hey, Kerry?
Oh, Kerry.
Oh, is it, who else? Kerry, Kerry? Kerry Smith, are you there?
He's, looks like he's muted.
Okay, I'm just gonna go through everybody real quick here. Um, Mary-Luk. Am I unmuted now? Thank you for the introduction. Okay, so I have Mary-Luk Cockram, I have Counselor Smith, Counselor Jesse. Counselor Jesse, are you there?
I am here.
Okay, great. So Counselor Jesse's here, and then Counselor Fackrell.
I'm here.
Okay, great, guys. And we are recording, we're ready to go. Well, hey, first I want to thank you all for showing up to tonight's meeting, the special council meetings, as it is a public hearing and then a special meeting after that. So we've got a pretty busy agenda tonight with the, with public testimony, everything else. So we'll try to get through as, as quickly as possible, but get everyone a chance to, to testify. So there's two really important things we're doing tonight, and, and I've been really excited for this meeting, especially with everything going on with COVID right now, and the freeze and two-week shutdown. A lot of businesses that are suffering, obviously, and we're really happy to be able to go over some language that improves some of the uses in our C1 zone to allow more uses and loosen up some restrictions. So we're gonna do a public hearing on that first, and these are recommendations from the Planning Commission from their public hearing, and they've been working on these for about two years now. And then, super excited about the second part, which is our special meeting. For, um, through the CARES Act, we actually, the city has $50,000, and we're gonna be able to discuss allocating a percentage of that to small businesses in Gearheart specifically. And we're gonna, we're gonna discuss doing that through our partnership with Cedar. They have gotten some grant applications already, and there's eight Gearheart businesses that are on that list. And we'd like to discuss using part of that $50,000 to fund some of those grants that folks have been waiting for. And I couldn't think of a better time to do it with everything that's going on and COVID cases on the rise. So we're really excited about these two parts, and hope that this really helps small businesses in our area. Just another note too, tonight, we're not gonna be discussing the Gearheart Elementary School. But that will be scheduled for an upcoming meeting with Mary-Luk. Plaine is gonna put that on an upcoming agenda. But, but I do want to say that Plaine and I are going to collaborate on doing a mayor's report here in the next couple of days. And we'll be able to put all the statements and all the facts about the sale of the Gearheart Elementary School in that report. So look for that probably in the next couple of days, and it'll talk about the future possibilities there and, and all the information. So the public's in the know on all that as well. So we'll kick things off with, with the public hearing, and as I always have a little legal script to read when, when the council does public hearings. So we're gonna officially open up the November 19th, 2020 Special Council Agenda Meeting for evening, starting out with a public hearing for the C1 text amendments. Tonight, we are holding a public hearing regarding application number 19-003 ZTA to consider text amendments to Article 3, Section 3.4, C1 Neighborhood Official Zone. This is a legislative hearing, your personal opinion may come into play. The hearing will proceed as follows. After the preliminary, preliminary legal matters, staff will make a presentation. Then any citizens who wish to address the issue will be given the opportunity. What we'll do is any members of the audience that wish to speak, we'll have them sign up via email. And Chad will just have them email you with their name and address.
Yeah, I, I'm ready to take that, yes.
So for sign up for tonight, just email Chad Sweet at CityofGearheart.com if you wish to speak, and just put your name and your mailing address as well, because we'll be mailing out notices possibly as well. So we got to have your mailing address as well. Then counselors may ask questions of the staff or anyone else who testifies. I now call to order the public hearing. I will now ask Counsel Peter Watts to cook, to cover the preliminary legal matters. Peter?
Um, is this the staff? I don't have the hearing script in front of me, so is this the staff report portion that we're going to do now?
This is the legal matters part, and I can actually, I can read that part for you if you'd like.
Because I don't have the script in front of me.
I got the script right here, so I'm gonna play Peter here. So legal matters, burden of proof criteria and appeals rights. The criteria that must be addressed in this hearing are located in the Gearheart zoning ordinance, Article 11.040, amendment criteria and the city staff report. As the city council is sitting legislatively, any testimony, argument, or evidence that speakers give the council, to the council must be directed at these criteria. Would be repetitive, but you have the opportunity to appeal the decision. You must sign, please sign up with your name and address for the record if you wish to testify. Only those who have appeared before the city council in person and writing will have standing to appeal this item to the Land Use Board of Appeals. So basically saying that you have to be on the record to testify, and you can definitely do that signing in or with paper testimony as well. Prior to the conclusion of the first public hearing on an application, anyone who takes part in the hearing may request a continuance or ask that the record be left open to present additional information. If there's such a request, the council will either continue the public hearing to a date certain or leave the record open for at least seven days for additional written evidence, argument, or testimony. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue recludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Challenges to the city council's jurisdiction. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this matter? Okay. So that concludes the legal matters. Thank you, Peter. Did I miss anything? Yeah. Now we're gonna go to the staff report and presentation. Let's proceed, Carol.
I think Peter was gonna have some opening remarks, and then I'll follow Peter.
Okay.
Sure. So as all of you, I'm sure, remember, we had an application come up for the Gearheart Crossing, and that made us look at the C1 zone for the first time in a long time, and realized that some of the language in it was perhaps a bit outdated or need some clarification. That we needed to strive for some clear and objective standards so that people reading the code could understand it, understand the intent, and understand what sort of businesses could go into that code. During the pandemic, some of our businesses have gotten creative, and they kind of identified some uses that I would say are within the purview of that C1 code and that are benefits to the neighborhood and, and community, and offered those. And those haven't necessarily been explicitly allowed under our prior language. So fortunately, you as the city council passed the Planning Commission approximately two years ago with looking at this code, going through it, and suggesting revisions. They've done a very thoughtful job on that. I think there've been a total of something like 15 meetings. After they released the initial language, we got some really good comments from members of the community that the Planning Commission considered. In addition, one afternoon, Chad, Carol, and I actually just walked the C1 zone to look at things like how wide is the sidewalk? Could there be tables there for outdoor dining? Asking those questions to try and figure out how feasible some of these things were. We got some other comments, proposals of things that would certainly be able to be done under, say, Cannon Beach's downtown code. But our C1 language is incredibly restrictive, and that was done purposefully. The idea is that that zone will serve the neighborhood. It will serve the folks of Gearheart, but it will not be an attractor that would bring in people from outside of the area. And so the goal is serve the community, don't attract tourists. That's the language of, that's in, in the current plan. If people were want to, want to pursue some of those things that, that are allowed and that they see happening in Cannon Beach that can't happen here, what we would need in order to make that happen is we would need to amend our comprehensive plan and to then do text amendments to our code. So that would be a, a much larger undertaking that would require approval from folks outside of the city such as DLCD staff. And so there are limits to what we can do because of that very restrictive language in our comprehensive plan. But the Planning Commission certainly felt like this was within an allowable range of use. I, my legal interpretation was the same, Carol's the same, Chad's the same. So there has been a lot of misinformation that's, that's been part of this process. And so just on the front end, I will say that if you have a existing use, an existing but non-conforming use, such as currently there's no residential allowed, but some of these buildings were built before that zone, so they have residential, this will in no way limit that pre-existing non-conforming use. What, what all these changes do is add flexibility so that if a, whether a building were demolished or a new building were built and there is one vacant lot, that there would be clear and objective standards that would allow them to know exactly what they could do. And that some of those uses that have worked in the zone, like residential as part of it, that they would have that ability to do that as well. So we're not taking anything away from anyone. We are adding greater flexibility. Some people like that, some people don't. That's the way it always is. But what we've attempted to do with all this is to have very clear and objective standards so people understand what can occur and that some of the good things that we've seen as people have gotten creative during the pandemic, that maybe some other people will be able to do those. And there won't be any risk of enforcement action against those people if this passes this evening because what they're doing will be allowed under the code. If you as the city council were to reject this, then we would no longer be able to do what we've done during this and what we did previously during the short-term rentals, as you'll remember, which was kind of a moratorium on enforcement because this is in the works. So that's the other, that's the other thing I would like to say. With the legislative amendment, you can do it, you can say no, or you can do nothing. In this, if you were to say, you know, we're not going to do this, at that point, there have been complaints that have been lodged against businesses by another business. And at that point, Chad would, would need to take on his enforcement role. So that is one collateral aspect of this for you to consider this evening. And that's what I've got.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Carol?
Okay, well, I'll take off from Peter's introduction there and direct you to the staff report if you would like to have that handy. It's a 14-page document that lays out a lot of detail that I'll try and summarize. I'll remind you that the C1 zone is very small. There's 13 parcels. And it's unusually small, and it's a well-defined zone in accordance with the plan. On the first page, there's a list of testimony that's been received to date, and there are some 24 or five entries there to the Planning Commission. And then you should have received two today in time to read them before the hearing to this, to the council. And, and it's, it's, it's an indication of some pretty good citizen involvement on this topic, in addition to the 14 meetings, the, the two work sessions between the council and the Planning Commission, and just a lot of ongoing discussion on this topic. I wanted to remind everybody that the Planning Commission and the city council, of course, volunteers, and they themselves represent a diverse mix of individuals and neighborhoods who all care deeply about their town. It's their role to reflect Gearheart values and to think long-term, to define issues, to educate the public, and to promote good planning. The Planning Commission is also serving as the state, in the state format of land use, the Gearheart Citizen Involvement Advisory Committee, which is quite typical of small towns to, who are unable to have multiple committees to be able to staff them and monitor them and, and manage them. And there's usually less demand for small cities. And so as has been mentioned, starting in 2018, this downtown issue, the C1 zone, was high on the Planning Commission's list. And they took their time to get input from the Planning Director in Cannon Beach to look at other examples of downtown zones, and was not a rush. This was not a rush. They, they really took a lot of time. They went to the council twice to, you know, kind of get some parameters and feedback in that process. And in the end, I think that the goal is to modernize the language from what we've had in place for a few decades at least. And we are hoping that this process and these, these amendments will bring in more modern revenue sources like takeout options, which are never mentioned in our current code, and a neighborhood grocery market, which is something that's different than we've had in the past and is not allowed now as it's defined. The other changes include more revenue options for the salon that's downtown, the barber shop, to include salon and spa services, which are not allowed now. The gallery, which is downtown, is being expanded to include more art, art sector options. And the variety store description is also being expanded to include home and garden apparel, limited food sale options that are not allowed now. The proposal allows for residential options attached to certain businesses for employees and workforce housing needs, which are not allowed now. The code, we spent a lot of time talking about formula use franchises such as McDonald's or Starbucks. What do we do with those potentially coming in? And they are defined now, which they weren't before, and very limited in their ability to enter into this small local zone and to compete with our local businesses. And just finally, in general terms here, the, the zone ensures the neighborhood character of the downtown remains intact by continuing to prohibit adult shops, amusement-type activities, parks, arcades, and Surrey-style bicycle rentals. So those are, that's a summation of the things that have been added and the things that have been clarified to both give more options, but also to make sure that the, that the zone retains its local character. Now, when the council and the Planning Commission consider amending your code, you're not amending the plan, you're just amending the code. All those planned policies stay in place. You have two sets of criteria. One is the comprehensive plan, and the second one is the indication of need. Somebody needs something? Okay. And so the comprehensive plan. Now, there's a background report, which is just worth mentioning one statement that goes with the comprehensive plan. It has a lot of explanation and descriptions of Gearheart. There's a statement in the background report that says notably, "Gearheart's economy is not based on tourism in the manner that other South Quadsom County communities of Seaside and Cannon Beach are." That's actually the writing. "The limited growth of tourism-related economy reflects the community's decision not to become a tourist destination." And therefore, you go to your comprehensive plan because this was, that was the, the beginning of the comprehensive plan. That statement was defined by the residents, and so the policies reflect that. And, and so in general, it's the goal of the plan to preserve the low-density, semi-rural character of Gearheart, ensure the development occurs in a manner that's in harmony with the sensitive coastal environment that defines Gearheart. And just to, on page four, it's just notable that these policies are, are actually redundant, and they, they all say, they keep saying the same thing, which starts with that opening background comment that leads to the C1. "The city will limit commercial activity in the city and the types of uses permitted in commercial zones to a level that is compatible with Gearheart's residential character. The city will prevent the city from becoming a tourist destination. To achieve this policy through its land use designations, that being the C1 zone, shall seek to accommodate only a very limited level of tourist development. The city will work to achieve a level of commercial development that supports the needs of the residents rather than serving a regional commercial center role or providing for major tourist destination facilities. The city will limit the number of business uses in the C1 zone so that the zone does not become a destination for tourists." And that's, that's really what we're talking about here. This is a comprehensive plan policy that's very explicit. The city then will establish zoning ordinance standards to protect residential uses from adjacent commercial development. And so how does the city go about doing that? In this case, they create a list of uses that are permitted, that are pretty specific and not, and pretty short. And some of those uses, which have higher, higher impacts, can only be accepted through a conditional use permit, which is a Planning Commission decision and appealed to the city, appealable to the city council. And so that, that's the framework you have here. You have your planned policies that are broad, but they're also, in this case, very explicit. And then how do you implement that? You take it to the zone, and the zone is defined to meet those policies. Now, if the city decided, "We don't like those policies anymore. We want more flexibility," then you'd have to start with the plan and, and go back and change those policies. And then you wouldn't turn to your code and possibly change the code. But that's not what's happening here. This is really a refinement of what we already have. It's not a whole new program in any way. The amendments are consistent with those comprehensive plan policies and at the same time giving more options for the business owners. And so the findings are all laid out in this staff report in response to the comprehensive plan in terms of relevancy. Some of the policies and many of the policies in the plan, of course, are not relevant. But the ones that are, the findings are here. And knowing that the C1 zone is surrounded by residential zoning on all sides, the regulations are clearly intended to recognize the importance of those neighborhoods, protect them from negative impacts of transient rental of property or increased levels of traffic and other disruptions that might occur from commercial development. And the city will limit activity and the types of uses to a level that's compatible with the residential character. This is just over and over, the same things are said, but it really gets down to this. The kind of, the city wants and hopes to have business that serves the needs, but really has minimal negative impact on the surrounding property. And so this Planning Commission finds the amendments will not significantly increase opportunities for businesses to attract regional tourism and will minimize the need for additional parking. For example, the amendments prohibit a business offering primarily amusement activities and rentals that attract tourists and cars and temporary rentals and so on. The amendments respect the existing policies to avoid the proliferation of restaurants and bars that put parking pressure on adjoining residential uses and disrupt the neighborhood. The amendments prohibit formula retail uses that would compete with our local commerce. So moving through here. One of the city goals is of course to
Do you have your phone on in the audience? Could you please mute your phone? You're in the audience. We're just getting a little bit of static feedback there from, from a few of the callers. Looks like caller's one, two, and three. So please mute your phones if you can. Thank you.
In addition to those general policies that I went over, of course, a policy that's important is the economy. And the economy policies in Gearheart are to ensure that we'll be a stable and healthy economy in Gearheart through all available resources, both human and natural resources. And so how are we meeting that goal? Well, the intent is to ensure a stable and healthy economy through every means. But as everyone is well aware, a healthy economy is based on multiple factors in order to ensure a healthy economy, such as changing market demands, competition, financing, location, building ownership, tenant business plans, and operations. Now, the amendments were initiated by the commission just to explore some zoning approaches that may contribute to a healthy economy. The zoning itself is, is one factor. It's not the only. The comprehensive plan defines the C1 zone in a restrictive manner, and it's not the C2 or the C3 zone. The city, combined, has these three commercial zones that provide an element to assure a healthy economy. And of course, the city alone cannot assure anything. It's, it's an attempt to do the best we can to meet all these goals. And as things change, respond to the changes. The Planning Commission found the amendments will stabilize the economy by legitimizing will stabilize the economy by legitimizing several retail and housing uses that are not currently permitted, such as apartment rentals, takeout food, and takeout alcohol, including liquor. Some people like to have a martini. That's what's kind of the discussion. It's not meant to open up bars on every corner. It's just an option for people who prefer something besides beer and wine. The planning commission decided that maybe we could remove the 10 o'clock closing restriction and the maximum of no more than nine tables in a neighborhood cafe. And so those two items have been deleted from the C1 zone. The, some of the recommendations from the public to allow unlimited seating outside and maybe allow some sidewalk seating if there's room on the sidewalk. And so those changes were added by the planning commission. Also, expanding the items sold in variety stores to allow limited food service, apparel, antiques, home and garden sales. These all help these businesses, and they've been added to the definitions. Briefly, the housing goals by the state and the city are, are in this report and how we responded to them. The main thing is, is that housing is, is already in some buildings downtown, and it works as a mixed use in a very limited space for employees or workforce housing. The planning commission feels that that's a good addition. We don't have very many moderate-income housing options in Gearhart and/or any, or mixed use. And so this creates kind of the classic mixed use that might have even been there back in the day in the C1 zone. And, and so that's the end of a summary of the comprehensive plan policy compliance. It's all there for examination, and I can't, don't need to take you through anymore.
Excuse me, phone caller. We're getting a little stagnant. Caller two, could you please mute your phone?
I think they are. Okay.
Sorry, girl. Keep going.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm getting wrapped up here in a minute. And so the other criterion is demonstration of public need. And, and really, the findings that I've gone through before have already, have covered, really, just tell you why there's a need for these amendments. There are many things that have changed in the downtown retail in the uses there and the demands and the market. And that's what these changes are trying to do, which was the planning commission's original mission, to see how this zoning process could help existing businesses. There is a need. There were many empty storefronts at that time, and there, there still are. And this indeed should help. I just want to say one more time that I want to reiterate two things. Should a neighborhood cafe be a permitted use as requested by some of the property owners? And shouldn't we just say that retail uses are allowed? Any retail use? And the answer is no, because of two reasons. There are suggestions that, yeah, they, they kind of seem more direct or easier to understand, but the problem is doing that does not comply with your comprehensive plan. That kind of a direction is exactly what the C2 zone is for. And those three zones, C1 downtown, C2 on the highway, and C3, a little more mix of kind of more industrial, heavier commercial uses, have all been defined to meet the comprehensive plan policies. And the C2 zone is to provide for a broader range of commercial development and may be located in the C1 zone. That's a statement right out of the plan. And, and so that's why, as frustrating as it might be to owners, that's the intent. And that's the way, we, that's the way we stay in compliance with our comprehensive plan. We're not changing the plan. We're changing the code to make it more flexible and stay in compliance with the plan. So, and how do we do that? It's by defining the uses and by assuring that some of the uses that have more impact have to get a conditional use permit. Okay. Now, I'd like you to turn to the actual C1 zone that's been forwarded to you as Exhibit A from the planning commission and who just finished it up last week. And just make sure you're all on the same page about what it says. Okay, so I, I'm looking at final version approved by the planning commission, November 12, 2020, Exhibit A. "Neighborhood commercial zone is to provide for the location if needed of small businesses and services in the city center for the convenience of nearby residents. Businesses are intended to fit into the residential character of the neighborhood and not create either architectural or traffic conflicts." The first list are the outright permitted use, uses. And that is, somebody walks in, asks for a business license from the city, and the city grants the business license if it meets one of these seven categories. The elaborations that have occurred in these, in this process by the planning commission are the neighborhood grocery market. This is a new concept that the planning commission feels reflects two things. It both reflects the intent of this policy in the C1 zone, but it also specifies a lot of things that are not defined anywhere else in the code or in the comp plan to really help the business owner understand what the intent is. Now, it's a little bit unusual to have a definition like this. It could just say eating and drinking establishment or grocery market, period. But the intent here is to reflect the flavor of the C1 zone as we've just been going through in detail. And, and that's special to Gearhart, maybe? I don't know. I've looked at every code in the world, but this is a little, this is not typical to have this kind of a definition, but we think it allows a lot of flexibility. And a modern, so a modern community marketer co-op primarily sells food and sundries, including produce, meats and seafood, beer and wine, personal and household items, and other grocery items. May also include a deli, soup, salad bar, bakery, ice cream, and made-to-order meals and beverages to go. May offer beer growlers to go, wine tasting, and limited on-premise beer and wine alcohol consumption where appropriate and subject, of course, to OLCC licensing. Indoor seating, in this case, now remember, we're in a market. We're not in a cafe. Is limited to 700 square feet. Outdoor onsite seating is unlimited. And that was a request by the property owners. We think that's a good idea. It's not raining. People want to sit outside. Why can't they? Now, that's onsite, unlimited. That's on your own property. Public sidewalks has, in the past, not been mentioned anywhere in our regulations. Public sidewalk seating is permitted in accordance with safety and ADA requirements. Now, you don't need a permit, which was also asked by the property owners. Why do we need a permit to do that? But the city will have specifications written out so that, you know, when you come in for a business license and see what you want to do, you want some outdoor seating, you just get a sheet that says, okay, you have to meet ADA. Here's the measurements, and here's what, how to do it. So that's the neighborhood grocery market. Outright use, no conditional use. Also outright barber salon and spa services. Those last two aspects were added. Also outright arts and crafts gallery and studio, existing use. But it allows a little bit more. It could have a store which sells and displays art, arts and craft supplies, and may even have art space for art classes and artists to work. Home occupations already permitted, nothing's changed. Government facility limited to a post office. Existing wording unchanged. Offices unchanged. Manufactured dwelling unchanged. And that's for construction offices during construction. Okay, so then you, you go on to the next list. This is, those are the easy ones. The second one is conditional use. Now, if you, this is where you get the finer review based on the plan and those things that we discussed earlier through the planning commission. You file for a permit, you get on their agenda, and you can do the following. A neighborhood cafe currently is a conditional use. So this is not a change. But now it's defined in a different way. And right off the bat, it is not permitting formula use as defined herein. So neighborhood cafe, a business devoted primarily to serving of prepared food. See a typo. Where food is consumed while customers are seated at tables and having no more than 1,300 square feet of eating or seating, whatever you want to say there, that might be clarified, area. That's existing. That's existing language that we have right now. What we did take out is the nine, or the number of tables or the number of chairs. We thought that was too hard to enforce and impossible, really, to keep track of and unnecessary. 1,300 square feet is 1,300 square feet. And that's easy. Also took out the 10:00 PM time curfew, closing time, and also took out the requirement, which is in there now, says you have to be open for 11 months a year. What was added to the cafe was food and beverage may also be sold for takeout. And service may include alcohol sales on premise or to go by license. Also added was outdoor onsite seating is unlimited. And also added was sidewalk seating that are discussed. Okay, so that's, that's an existing use in an existing conditional use category with more definition and clarification and more opportunity. Secondly, conditional use, a variety store. Right now, it just says variety store in the code, C1. Now, to help understand and to expand the opportunities and for business owners is defined as a neighborhood or commu- community retail store or gift shop selling a variety of household, including, same, that's a little awkward, household project items, including home and garden items, antiques, and personal use items, including apparel. Limited food sales, which is currently not allowed for takeout, as long as it's not the primary business, including coffee, tea, baked goods, made off premises, because now we don't want to turn this into a bakery or a manufacturing of candy necessarily. It's just that you can sell food, which is not allowed now, and ice cream and similar items. Outdoor seating is unlimited on the site, and public seating is permitted by the city. And finally, a new use that's not now allowed is a residential use, is permitted in conjunction with a permitted use where the residential use does not exceed 50% of the building's total floor area. Okay, and since we're in this business of defining what you can and what you can conditionally do and outright do, the, the, the last figure is what you can't do in the zone. And some of this is already in the code, but like the first one, which is in every zone, the sale or holding out for sale or other, allowing others to sell or hold out for sale more than one or newer used vehicles, motorhomes, trailers, and so on. Prohibited uses as defined in the tsunami hazard overlay zone. That's just to connect you to another section of the zoning code to make sure you're not, that you are in compliance with that. Number three, prohibited amusement parks, arcades, or Surrey-style bicycle rentals. This was amended based on some testimony. Number four, formula use. Drive-in restaurant, mobile food vending wagon, or other drive-in facilities, such as a car wash. And then there's a definition of formula use, which is based on the Cannon Beach wording very closely, almost word for word, with the exception of "four" being the threshold when you're defining what is a formula use. "Four" or "more," and then "as defined." Also prohibit is a private parking lot. That's new. For the limited amount of space that is available in that zone, precious land given over to parking lots the planning commission thought would not be the best use. Manufactured facilities is an existing state. No, this is, I think this is existing. It's part of the business. Of course, you can't, no, this isn't. This is new. Manufactured facility is part of a business in conjunction with a permitted use where the creation of products on site through industrialized processes takes place that may have an impact on local utilities and the neighborhood in general, including fermentation, distilling, and fabrication. That's new. And seven, adult shops. I think another part of the municipal code probably already prohibits those, but we, I think the planning commission and staff thought it'd be useful to make that perfectly clear here in the C1. All right, I've got one more little section here to tell you is new. And that is the C1 zone standards. When you're building something in the zone on a vacant lot, right now, item two doesn't exist in the code. It doesn't tell you about a minimum lot size, lot coverage. There's no description of density, front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, and height. And so these have been added to allow maximum use of those small lots right up to the sidewalk. So there's no minimum lot size. There's no lot coverage maximum. That'll be handled quite a bit by septic constraints. No minimum or maximum density for residents is just 50% of a building. And that's how that's defined. No front yard setback. We don't want new buildings to be, to have to be set back. They should be up to the sidewalk if they want to. No side yard setback, except when you're adjoining a residential zone, and then there should be at least five feet. A rear yard setback should be at least five feet. And this is for alley access and other things that often happen in rear yards. And there should be a building height, at least defined, and it's recommended to be 30 feet or two stories, whichever is less. The other change the planning commission made is not to require off-street parking when a new structure is proposed. Because where would you put it? There's so little land. To have to put parking on the site is, is actually impossible for many of the parcels and would be a waste, again, of prime property. Now, if you go to the last page of this Exhibit A, there's three kind of cross-reference suggestions. One of them is what if somebody wants to put a pawn shop in the C1 zone? And that was discussed by the planning commission because I, apparently that, that's getting to be more common in the North Coast or coastal towns. I'm not sure of that, but I think there's quite a bit in Astoria and Seaside. And to assure that they did not want to locate in the C1 zone because of the zone is too limited in size, then you add the pawn shop use as a permitted use in the C2 zone, which automatically places it there. And if it's not listed in the C1, and it is listed in the C2, then that would clarify it. Now, that's a decision that the council needs to make as to what Now, that's a decision that the council needs to make as to whether they want to add that to the C2 zone. And any cross-references are needed for definitions, particularly the neighborhood cafe and neighborhood market, variety store, formula use need to be inserted. And also the conditional use section, there's quite a section on neighborhood cafes. And what we're recommending, I've already said, but when you go into that portion of the code, we would take out the minimum of 11 months calendar year being open, the 10:00 PM closing time of that section. So I'm sorry that was so long, but I think at least now you know exactly what's in front of you and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
And we could do our questions after testimony, correct?
Sure.
Okay. So let's move on next then with public testimony. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, if you wish to testify during the hearing, please email Chad Sweet at cityofgearhart.com. And please put your name and also your mailing address for the record for there. When your name is called, we'll have you get on the line and mute your phone. Also, please repeat your name and mailing address vocally as well so we can record that. Each person who does come forward and wishes to testify will have three minutes to speak. If you also have any written material or other evidence that you emailed in, you can always reference that during during testimony as well. So if he sent in a letter or reading a letter. And so with that, Chad, are you on the line? Okay, we're gonna wait for Chad here. Because he's got the emails. Chad, do you have anyone signed up to speak tonight?
Yeah, so far, I've just got Tracy Williams who's signed up to speak.
Okay, great. Tracy Williams, you have three minutes to say, please give your full name and address for the record as well.
Hi there, I'm working on getting everything together here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, take your time. I won't start the three minutes until you're ready.
And can you see me? Is that, I don't know if it's needed, but...
I can't see you, but, but I can, but we can hear you good.
Okay, well, that's more important because I'm sure you all have seen my face enough. Okay, so with that said, I want to thank you all for letting me have a chance to speak again. And also, thank you very much to Carol and Peter for working with me to clarify some things. I want to again stress that I, in particular, am very concerned and would like to recommend that the soda fountain definition, while I understand people believe, sorry, my dog doesn't like it when I talk. Hold on, just, I'm gonna let her out.
He's testifying.
Had a lot of tears in my house today. We've had some big, big news personally, but, okay, so the dog doesn't like that. Okay, so back to this. Well, I understand that the city has said multiple times that the soda fountain is an archaic definition. I'm going to read what the definition is right now. It's a business that is operated out of a fixed building limited to the preparation and or sales of ice cream products, food, non-alcoholic beverages on a carryout basis. And that is actually the bulk of my business, and that's how I opened. And I have a second license for the rest of the stuff, but as I've said on a couple different occasions, primarily I'm an ice cream shop. Especially with COVID, I've filled in the building with a lot of other things to look at, but that's not what pays the bills. It's not what, how I make my money. And so I would want to ask you and ask the city to consider how they're going to enforce words such as primary and primarily and food versus ice cream, because in two of the definitions, ice cream's called out separate from food. And my attorney and I, we've looked through a lot of code. When ice cream's called out separate from food in a definition, it's not considered food. So Peter and Carol, I got a really nice email. I want to thank you both, Peter and Carol, explaining that my current use would be allowed under the neighborhood market. But I don't sell a lot of the other things that a market sells while I look like it right now. And we pivoted to that in COVID. At some point, if there's a grocery store open again and COVID's over, I'd like to go back to the primary business model that I have, which is ice cream and wine, which is the two things that I 100% have license for. And Peter said, to the extent there's any ambiguity, I would have a pre-existing non-conforming use, which is great and all, but if I, you know, that's, that's not comforting as an outright use. And so I would ask you to reconsider dropping soda fountain. It's one line, but dropping soda fountain as a, as an outright use, I think does have an impact. And I will, I want to pose this other question or comment.
Three minutes is up, but I'll let you pose the question.
Okay. So basically, an ice cream parlor, if I shut or go away or burn down, you know, I can do whatever I'm doing grandfathered in my building, but there can never be another ice cream parlor, like just a straight-up cute ice cream parlor if you get rid of this soda fountain definition. Because someone else is going to have to have all the accouterments of a market or all the accouterments of a cafe. Well, actually, ice cream's not allowed under the neighborhood cafe definition if you parse that out or a variety store. And so, I mean, does Gearheart not want to have an ice cream parlor going forward?
Thanks, Tracy. We'll, in the discussion after this, we'll explain that part, but that would not in any way be a detriment to any uses that you're already doing. And we'll explain that at the end, for sure. Thanks, Tracy, appreciate that. Chad, do you have anyone else? Chad, you're on mute. Nobody, nobody else on the signup? Okay, Tracy, can you do me one favor? I just got a message from Cheryl. Can you, can you repeat your mailing address again for the record?
My mailing address, yeah, is P O Box 2337, Gearheart 97138.
Okay, perfect. Thanks very much, Tracy. Appreciate that.
Can I just ask one more thing? Sorry, the dog interruption dragged me.
And we'll address all your answers to those questions too, so feel free to ask.
My question is, how are these things going to be enforced? The words like primarily and all this sales things, how, how are they going to be enforced? Because I have, I keep really good records for what I sell, but it seems like there's a lot of ambiguity in these definitions.
Thanks, Tracy.
Enforcement.
Okay, we appreciate that. So there's no other testimony, public testimony for signup, but, but I will allow if anyone else does want to speak on the record, we can do it right now. Just please give me your name and mailing address. Would anyone like to speak on the record for three minutes? Okay. So with that, so with that, we're going to move on. So questions of staff. Does the staff have any further comments or clarifications? And this would be a time to answer Tracy's question for her. So I'm going to ask for comments, clarifications from staff, and then we'll do the same thing with council as well. So if, if we want to help answer the question, or if we have more questions for you, Peter or Carol, we'll go from there. So Peter, do you want to kind of start out with some of those questions?
You know, we've, we've taken, I, I understand Tracy's point. We've, we've taken a look at whether it would make sense to retain that definition. That certainly is up to you as the council will decide whether to do that. I don't think that frankly, it doesn't get what Tracy to where she needs to be because the, that definition specifies that only non-alcoholic drinks would be, would be served. And so in an instance where someone is serving beer and wine, in addition to ice cream and milkshakes and malts and, and what else, they wouldn't be able to operate under that former definition. And so by...
Peter, can I just say, I have two, I have two permits.
True.
Tracy, Tracy, listen, we're, we're going to answer all those questions. You, you've had, you've had your time to you've got all of your testifying on the record. But please also allow us to, to answer these questions and, and be able to hear all the legal points of view as well. Thank you.
So I think that, you know, whether or not you want to retain that definition, that's certainly within your purview to do it. You know, half of Tracy's shop is, does, does fit into that definition. And looking at the definition for the neighborhood market, I think, you know, it covers, it covers everything. So it covers the, specifically covers the the, the beer, the wine onsite or to go as well as the various food. If we want to add the word ice cream to that, or, you know, single-serving ice cream, or if you want to add that to that, just to really specify, we can. I think that, but I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessarily necessary.
Yeah, Peter, ice cream's already on there for neighborhood grocery market. And the way that I, and, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but the way it sounds, the planning commission made these definitions, it's not that, like, for instance, in the market definition, there's a lot of things that can be done in that zone, right? But it doesn't, that you have to do all those. Is that correct?
Correct. So the, the idea, the idea in drafting this, and if, if this ever were to come up, if someone were to say, be it Tracy or someone else, about what the intent of the council was and about what the understanding of the council was as when you adopted this, you know, there's now a video, unflattering video of me talking about how, yeah, we are the, my opinion, the opinion of the planner and the opinion of the planning commission was that Tracy's business as it exists today, everything she's doing today, fits within that definition of a neighborhood market. And so when you're adopting this code, if you believe that our analysis is correct, then you will be validating that view. If you don't think that's correct and you don't think that that will be allowed, then I would need for you to say, I really disagree with that analysis, the way that I would interpret this is by X. And so I think what we've tried to do, and this is, I've provided, I have provided written guidance to multiple people who've had questions, so that if there ever is any doubt, because we're not trying to hide anything. We're trying to be completely transparent. If there's ever any doubt, then the understanding of the city attorney was this. I informed the planning commission of my opinion. Carol did the same. The planning commission adopted this, you know, based on their understandings. And by, by not saying, no, I disagree, then, you know, they're essentially saying, yeah, that's our intent as well. When you, when you or if you, because you don't have to, you can always say no or punt this out. But if you were to adopt this tonight, you're adopting it based on all of those legal representations that I'm making now and that I've made previously. And so to the extent there's any ambiguity, and maybe there is, because we, we tried to keep a little bit of flexibility in there because people are creative and we want, we want a little bit of flexibility in there for them. But if there's any question, then they can rely upon this. And, you know, that, hopefully that would get them where they need to be.
So Peter, Carol, I just want to be perfectly clear so, so we all understand this. And, and the way I, and, and I just want to be clear the way that I see it. So you now have a definition, and if you look at Tracy's business, which is really incredible what she's turned it into, and I, and I think it should be, as a lot of people do, I think that these different forms of revenue that she's been doing are really, really good for, not only as a business model, but, but good for the community. It meets a lot of community needs. So if you look, if you, if you break it up to what it used to be when, when you say soda fountain, and a soda fountain doesn't allow variety store type of things to be sold in a soda fountain. A soda fountain doesn't allow beer and wine to be sold in a soda fountain. If you go over to the definition, current definition of neighborhood cafe, a neighborhood cafe does not allow a variety store type of goods and, and stuff to be sold there. But now, since broadened the definition of, of neighborhood market, which, which would clearly list all of those uses that, that Tracy just listed as a soda fountain are now listed in that same definition of neighborhood market. And that is a outright use now. No condition on that at all. So that would allow Tracy to sell household goods, which is in that definition. It would allow her to sell beer and wine legally now, which, which is in that definition. Would allow her to sell ice cream to do food to go. It doesn't mean that she has to do everything that's on that definition list. It just means if, if her business model includes some of those things, which hers does, then she can kind of take it in any direction she wants. And it seems like the intention of the planning commission is just to add that flexibility there. So someone like Tracy, if she decides, boy, I'm going to start selling this, or I'm going to start selling this, that they have the freedom now to do that. Is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely. So if there's a, you know, I, I think a lot of people have kind of moved to Gearheart that used to visit Gearheart, and now Gearheart has become kind of their primary home. Maybe there's going to be demand for like a, a very high-end like gourmet dog food or something like that. And, you know, if a bunch of people say to Tracy, hey, we love, you know, I love stopping by, grabbing a glass of wine, you know, doing all that. There's this really high-end dog food that we can get in Portland that isn't available on the coast. Could you bring that in? The idea is that she could bring that in, and it wouldn't interrupt her current use, which is, you know, serving ice cream, serving beer and wine. It's that she would have the flexibility. It doesn't mean that you would have to sell Hormel ham or like Franz bread or, or any of those things. It's by using that neighborhood grocery, that neighborhood market, it was, this isn't Fred Meyer's, but you have more flexibility.
And then on the, on the other part of a neighborhood cafe definition, there, there's a lot of flexibility there too, because whether we put ice cream in there or not, I mean, ice cream is, is food. What we, what the intention, it sounds like from the planning commission though, was to list out ice cream specifically in the market definition so that it would absorb every possible definition under neighborhood or under soda fountain. And that way there wouldn't be any ambiguity, and it, it would hopefully make it so people aren't concerned about getting rid of that outdated type use.
Mr. Mayor, can I add something to this discussion? I think it might be a matter of words or the way it's stated, because what Tracy's asking for is not a neighborhood grocery market. Okay, let's just say, she, let's just say she wants to go straight back to the soda fountain.
But she still can't...
Okay, but the word she's bothered by is, and let's just make this clear. It, a market or co-op which primarily sells food and sundries, okay? Is that the starting point? And then it can include all these other things. But what if it isn't primarily selling food and sundries? Can it just be straight up soda fountain without...
Well, that's exactly right. Thank you.
And food would be ice cream though, wouldn't it? And food would be ice cream though, wouldn't it? Is an ice cream a food?
Well, I just think maybe it is to some, and it's not clear to her. And I, I can see where she's coming from, because her use is not necessarily a market, if it were just the soda fountain.
But we want to give her, but we want to give her the option to expand into-
Exactly. I agree.
Thing that she wants to just make sure the flexibility there. And I think it is in, in every sense of, of the intention. But what if you did this? Here, here's an idea. Why don't you just add the word soda fountain to the definition of neighborhood grocery market?
It wouldn't hurt, because it's more than selling a gallon of ice cream. It, it's different. Now, I don't know if you say something like a modern community market or co-op or soda fountain, which primarily sells food and sundries and all those other things, or exactly how you inserted.
I have to figure out which hand to put up.
We could deliberate on for sure. Colina?
I just want to make one comment. The, the thing about soda fountain that, and I'm going back to the deliberations that we had with the crossing. And so when you, when I think about a soda fountain, I think about a bar. You're sitting up at a bar, kind of like the old Bartell Drug in Seaside, where you kind of go and you sit there, it's like they're giving you a soda, or they're giving you ice cream. And so I wonder if we tweak that a little bit, maybe ice cream shop. I don't even like the word parlor really, and I hate to be so specific. But like, I, I hear what Tracy's saying, and I'm not sure how you'd fit it in there with regard to the words primarily, what Matt just said. But ice cream shop, I could see having that as just a use, however it fit in, with or without being part of the grocery piece.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't see any, any problem with adding ice cream into the mix. I mean, personally, I see ice cream as a food. I mean, that's just me. You know, who knows what the next city administrator, code enforcement officer is going to see. But it, it seems like it's included.
I think what was specifically, it sounded like from the, the deliberation of the planning commission is that it's in the, you know, ice cream is in neighborhood grocery specifically to take on that definition of, uh, of soda fountain. But, but maybe the word primarily can change, or maybe a couple of words there, ju- just for you, Tracy, just so you feel okay with it. Um, I know that the intention of it, what it is, I think you know what it is, I think Peter knows what it is. I think everyone here knows what it is. And we're not here to find some weird technicality to, to get somebody that's being successful. So if we can add a word or two that helps, and we can do that during deliberation, uh, and, and just see what language we come up to. And I'm sure we're going to have some other things to look at too, uh, and deliberate on. So let's move along, and, and is there any other questions or clarifications from anyone for staff or, or from the council?
Well, this is Rita, and I have a comment. I don't have a question. But the term soda fountain suffers from the same demise as the word cobbler. It's connotation versus denotation. So it's, it's like, the word cobbler, it's someone who makes shoes, but you think of Geppetto sitting there in his shop. And soda fountain just might be a little outdated. So I just wanted to let you know, connotation versus denotation, that's all.
Yeah, that, that's a good point, Rita, and I think that was the intention too, from the planning commission, is let's, let's clean up some of this outdated language and move it into areas so that it's simpler and gives you more flexibility. Because, yeah, Tracy could go back to, to just being a soda fountain, but, you know, what you're doing now is great. Why, why would you want to go back to that? Why, why wouldn't you want to keep doing anything that, that, you know, and, and adapt as much as possible? So that, that's the flexibility, I think, that is the, is the-
I could answer that, Matt, though, because staffing issues for those two different models changed dramatically pre and post COVID. And so while soda fountain is an outdated term, it is a legal definition in the code and what allows me to, and allowed me to open.
Right. And I think our intent obviously is to keep those uses in, in the new code. But, uh, but we can look at changing those words. I think that's what we'll definitely deliberate on. Uh, any more questions for staff? Okay. Um, so with that, we're going to close the public hearing aspect of it. And then we are going to go to our deliberations. So deliberation wise, we have some options. We can definitely discuss some of these wording changes. We can make a motion to, uh, to approve with some changes, or we can decide to do nothing as well. So does anybody have any ideas or questions on some that they would like to change? Or do we want to hear a motion?
I would like to discuss something that I would like changed.
So I hear it.
Okay, and under the neighborhood grocery market, the word alcohol consumption is put in there. And it's, it's got beer and wine and alcohol. And if the argument stands that Tracy could be considered a market, then by this definition, she could also open up a hard liquor establishment.
I think you're talking about neighborhood cafe. Carrie?
The neighborhood grocery market.
Right, that's, that's only beer and wine, but what you're talking-
Alcohol consumption in it.
What page is it?
So hold on, hold on.
That's page one under, uh, number one, neighborhood grocery market.
Carrie, correct, but it, but if you read it, it says limited, uh, uh, OLCC license. The limited on premises specifically refers to just beer and wine. That, that's the definition of limited on premise. That, so it's, it, so the market would only allow beer and wine, but the neighborhood cafe is the one that could, could do hard alcohol, uh, the way that the planning commission has it.
I, I understand. If I, if I read this, may offer beer growlers to go, wine tasting, limited on premise beer and wine alcohol consumption where appropriate, subject to OLCC licensing. And alcohol, to me, is a hard liquor drink when you have beer and wine already stated. And I don't think that if you can consider Tracy's business a market, then she could open a bar, and I will not go along with something like that. I think that's absolutely ridiculous.
Carrie, Carrie, that's not the intent of that. The intent is-
I know, but that's the way it reads.
Well, then we can change that part. It, it doesn't mean that we can't change the wording.
I'd be more than happy to go along with the change of that, but I, I couldn't not say something about this.
Yeah, and, and I think the intention by the word limited on premise, that, that isn't, that is a specific license from the OLCC. So that's what the-
And it doesn't have to have alcohol in there. So we can delete-
That word, does it need that word alcohol? It does seem redundant almost.
It, it is, and it's more specific about hard liquor than it is about beer and wine. So if we can drop that, I don't have an objection on it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and I think it means the same thing, but now I'm more comfortable with it. So let's, let's just knock off that word.
Okay.
So we'll make that note.
I'm happy.
Good. We're glad, Carrie.
Just for clarification, because I want to just say, I do have a neighborhood cafe license. So if I, I legally, going forward, I could open hard liquor anyway, Carrie.
Yeah, well, I'm-
Not that I want to, I'm not going to want to, I don't want to, I'm just pointing that out.
Okay, so I'm going for the definition, and if somebody else opened up another market and they decided, well, I'm having a, a bar here, I don't want that.
Right. And I think that what you're looking at is areas that have a conditional use. Neighborhood cafes, ways a great example. Under the planning commission's recommendations, if you're sitting down, obviously there's not a bar there. If you're sitting down, having a meal, having a steak, and you want to order a martini with that steak instead of a glass of wine, uh, that might be a revenue source that might be a little more profitable for that business owner to be a little more successful, and maybe bring in some folks that like to have a martini. So I think that's what the intention of, of that part is, right?
Yeah, and with the neighborhood cafe, I understand that. It's, the market just struck me as wrong.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll clear that language up as well. Okay, any other ideas for some changes? And we can definitely go into the, um, changing the wording that on the, um, soda fountain thing.
I, I have another one.
Yeah, go ahead, Carrie.
I, I would like to see on page two, item one, 1,300 square feet of seating area, not eating area. Because an eating area is a table, not a seating area. I'd like that, I think that's, someone dropped an S.
Could be.
Right. And I, I think in the current code, it does seating with an S, so we can add that back, not a problem.
Okay. And then on number two down, it goes at the very bottom, a residential use is permitted in conjunction with permitted use where the residential use does not exceed 50% of the building's total area. Is there some way we can put in there, it's not going to turn into a hotel, overnight stays are not welcome. It's long-term for worker, workforce, or, uh, em, employee or re, um, people that own the business. Owner occupied, thank you.
Correct.
That kind of thing. I don't want it to turn into, yeah, hey, man, I got a room upstairs, you can stay the night or the weekend.
Right. I mean, unless you're just offering your residence to a friend or something, but we were talking about as an out, short-term rental, basically, I think, already-
Yeah, Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
Our, our current ordinance does not allow any short-term vacation rental permits in anything but the R3 zone. And, uh, this would not enable anybody to do short-term vacation rentals in the C1 at all.
Great. And, um, go ahead, Carrie.
No, go on.
Well, I was just going to say, this does bring up one point. The way that the wording is right now, um, it could be rented as a long-term apartment to, like, an employee or somebody. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that's, that's correct, for 30 days or more.
But it doesn't have to be an employee, it could be somebody else that just needs a place.
Could be the, uh, a- as far as we're considered, it could be the owner. It could be another rental, uh, as long as it's over 30 days.
And are you guys all okay with that language? It doesn't necessarily have to be the owner that lives there, or an employee, it can be anyone else?
Yes, I'm okay with that. The source of revenue for them.
Carrie, any, uh, any other, uh, minor changes on there that you, that you have on your list?
Uh, the only other thing is on the staff. Uh, this is on page four, and it goes down to the GZO cross-reference corrections. Number three, I cannot find a specific use standards, number five, and, um, 5B and 5C. And when I looked it up, it was 1B and 1C. And so I just wondered where, um, Carol, you got the, the number five?
Mr. Mayor, I'll jump in. It depends also on what version of the code you have. It's been amended so many times lately, that maybe you and I are working off a different version. But I'm happy to double check and make sure that's right. You want me to do that now?
You can do that later. I'd say, you know, it's not something that's critical. I just, it's something that I thought was odd that I couldn't find it, and you're quoting a different number than I could find.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's one of the rewrites. We took some liberty in, when we put the TH, the tsunami overlay zone in, to reorganize some of the code aspects that were out of order or confusing. And regardless, it's deleting what it says there. And that's the 11-month requirement and 10:00 PM closure.
Right. Yeah, I just, it, it, when I couldn't find the reference, I thought I would ask for clarification.
Good, good call. And I just looked, and my current code as of January 2020 is 5B and C.
Well, then I guess I need to look to see if I've got the updated code. And it's not in my book, that kind of thing.
Exactly.
That's all I got.
Hey, thanks, Carrie. Those were, those were really, really good. And, um, we can make notes of those if, if we do a motion. I, uh, can I take a stab at this soda fountain deal?
Yeah.
Um, okay. Market. So I agree with Rita, like, like, like soda fountain is, it's an outdated term. But maybe we can, uh, maybe we can get this figured out in the, in the definition of neighborhood grocery market. Could there be a line, like, at the end of the definition that says, previous soda fountain style eateries, eatery, are allowed under the previous definition?
That's a lot. Uh, you, right now, there is a definition, in the definition section of the code, which says exactly what Tracy said. So you either take it out, the definition, as we stand today, or you leave the definition there, and-
And reference it in this.
And, and or just put it back in. I mean, the funny thing is, this is one of the reasons the planning commission started this, was to take out outdated uses. And here we are, about ready to put it back in again, but what does it hurt?
I, I think the thing about it is, it's, i- it's obvious that there's, I just really can't see any practical problem with the language the way it is. I, I think it already covers all of that. So, and we all think that, our attorney thinks that, um, I don't see any, in any way, that that is going to cause any trouble. But, um, if you, if you just, I, I mean, I, I don't think you need to add it back as, as an outright use, but if you just put, you know, previous definition of soda fountain is acceptable, or something, um, as defined in the definitions.
That word previous bothers me, because it gets out of date.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Can, can, can you read, can you read the definition again? I'm sorry, I just don't have it in front of me, of soda fountain.
A business that is operated out of a fixed building, limited to the preparation and/or sales of ice cream products, food, and non-alcoholic beverages on a carryout basis only.
I mean, all of that's covered in the new definition. Ice cream, uh, food, um, takeout is okay.
That's kind of interesting it had that many things in it way back when.
Like, the fixed building and stuff, we don't, we don't need any of that, obviously, right? That's not going to affect anything. But what about this? A modern community marketer or co-op, a modern community market retail or co-op, and take out the word primarily, which sells food and sundries. Just take out the word primarily.
Yeah, that, well, that's the word that bothers there, and it is a bit open-ended, but sometimes you need that open-ended, in case you want to sell- open-ended, but sometimes you need that open-ended, in case you want to sell something that's not on the list.
And if you say a modern community market retail store, which, when you say retail store, that means, you know, grocery store is still a retail store, you're just selling food, but it just seems a little more flexible?
What if we just added the modern, the community market co-op, including ice cream parlor? Or including ice cream shop? I mean, I, again, I, I think we're already there, but if we want to call it out specifically, it just including ice cream parlor and leave the rest as it is, I think that's, that would certainly signal to anyone in the future that included in that co-op neighborhood market type of business, there could be that ice cream counter. I mean, I think that would, I think we're already there, but that would eliminate any ambiguity.
How about this? How about this? Take out, okay, I got an idea, take out the word primary, and then where it says "may also include," it says "may also include a deli, soda fountain, ice cream parlor, salad bar, bakery, and made-to-order meals and beverages to go." That absolutely covers everything.
All right, you say, let me see if you got this, "may also include a deli, soups, or, let's see, a deli, and ice cream," I mean, we don't like the word parlor, I don't know, "ice cream shop."
They also include deli, soda fountain, soup, salad bar, bakery, ice cream shop, and made-to-order meals and beverages to go.
Do we have to have a soda fountain and an ice cream shop?
I'm just trying, Tracy, I'm really trying to do the best in the wording to make you feel comfortable, and I don't think we need that language, no, but, you know, just trying to come up with some wording, but I, yeah, I mean, I think ice cream shop is is great.
What if we said on-premises sale of ice cream products? I, I would, I would, I mean, I, I don't know that we would need ice cream parlor and ice cream shop both. If we did something, just noted that it was on-premise ice cream, though, maybe that would do the trick.
Well, then, let's just put ice cream shop, so, so, because you've already got the beverages to go, right, which is already in soda fountain. So, so how about this? "May also include a deli, soup, salad bar, bakery, ice cream shop, and made-to-order meals and food beverages to go, and then on the top side, a modern community market which sells food and sundries, including..." And then just go on from there.
I mean, I can't imagine that anyone would think that didn't get us there, right?
Did you take out primarily or not?
Yeah, I took out primarily.
Yeah.
So just to recap, we're taking out the word primarily in the first line, the word alcohol in the fifth line, and we're going to add shop after ice cream in the third line.
Correct.
Got it.
Good job. Okay. Okay, so we're going to add that to our list, and that would be number five change on the list. You've got all these listed out, and obviously the recording too, so if we make a motion to add these changes, then you've got, okay. Okay, is there any other technicalities or little changes that the council would like to include?
I just want to clarify with Carol, when you went over the staff report, you found some typo thing that you pointed out while you were going through them, and I had them on my list.
Okay.
So I can, I just have to flip a few pages, but I'll just make sure that we have them, and I think Kerry got the rest. So forgive me while I flip a few pages here.
No, that's great, I'm happy to wait.
I, personally, on page six, on the second to the last line, it talks about meeting interruptions, and I just said early COVID because clearly just by the amount of participation we have tonight, I think we were slowed down more in early COVID, and
Wait, I have to find a different sentence, I don't know where you are, because I just have a staff report that's independent, that's just a...
Oh, I'm on page six of the staff report.
I didn't see that, okay. And what paragraph?
The last paragraph, the last line, last two lines.
Oh, there we go, I'm sorry, there we go, okay.
So I just feel like it was early COVID where there were meeting interruptions more, and and fires, I just said wildfire smoke. That's all.
Okay.
And I'm going to move on, on page seven, the next page, under findings.
Yeah.
This is just a typo, but it's combined, not
Yeah, I have, I've got that one, thank you.
Uh huh, and
Hey, Polina, you're a true planning commissioner, I love how you're making the changes under findings.
Me too.
And we, I did have comments about owners being a part of the residential use, because I I felt that that should be included. Owner occupied as opposed to workforce necessarily. And right now, I'm just referencing page 10 of the staff report, but we kind of talked about that.
Want to mute your phone for a sec? Cool, looks like we have two Kerry's.
So.
Sorry.
Counselor Polina, can I get this, that the housing can be for employees of a business or others interested in a lower-cost apartment housing unit, right?
Yeah, I just thought owner occupied was okay too.
Okay, oh, I see, but employee, owner, or, right, okay.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, just include that in there for the findings, for sure.
Yeah.
So now I'm, now I'm on page two of the 11, 12, 20, Exhibit A.
Got it.
Kerry pointed out the one on line four about eating area to seating area, but on line one, it's prepared food, not
Yes, thank you, thank you. Got it.
And that's it.
Thank you.
Great job, Polina.
Thank you.
Okay, any other changes from anybody? Okay, do I hear a motion to pass or to approve with changes?
Mr. Chair, can I direct you to page 14 where there's a motion? Because what you're doing is directing us to prepare an ordinance, I believe, with the corrections as noted.
Let me just read that real quick to whoever, if somebody does want to make a motion. So the motion itself would read like this, it'd say, "I move to approve file 19-003ZTA and direct staff and ordinance amending Article 3, Section 3.4, C1 Neighborhood Commercial Zone with the changes outlined at this meeting. Exhibit A for review and first reading at the December 2nd, 2020 council meeting." Is that covered?
That's good, I might have to call you later and get the exact words again.
But I forgot them, so.
Yeah.
Check the tape, though. Okay, so does anyone want to make a similar motion to that?
I'll make a motion. And this is related to city file number 19-003ZTA Neighborhood Commercial, C1 Zone Legislative Amendments, and based on the findings in the report, and as amended by the council in this meeting, I move to approve the amendments and direct city staff to prepare an ordinance to amend the Neighborhood Commercial Zone, C1 Zone.
Got it.
So, and then you want to include also for review and first reading at the December 2nd, 2020 council meeting?
For review and first reading at the December 2nd city council meeting.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mayor Lept Cockrum, and then we have a second by Counselor Fafrel. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone? Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Hey, I want to thank everyone who testified tonight, Tracy, thank you as well for helping us get that wording correct. Your comments have been really, really helpful. Appreciate everyone that also took part in the last two planning commission hearings, and also want to thank Ginny and the rest of the planning commissioners for taking this on for nearly two years. I think this is really going to help and help attract, not only help existing businesses, but help new businesses coming to your heart too, and hopefully a new neighborhood grocery market one day as well. So I just want to thank everyone for being a part of that, great job, that was a process. And next up, guys, we still have our special meeting. So now that the public hearing is completed, we're going to open our second part of our special meeting, and we'll start that out with a declaration of any conflict of interest.
I do not.
Okay. I don't have any either, Counselor Jesse, are you here? Counselor Jesse? And the only reason I'm bringing up Counselor Jesse is that his business is one of the businesses that is on this list of grants. And so he may want to recuse himself from the vote from that part. Chad, are you able to, you might have gotten knocked off the call, Chad, are you able to get ahold of him? So Jesse?
Yeah, I'll make an attempt here real quick, and I'll be right back.
Okay. So we're going to get Counselor Jesse on the line here, just so we can cover that part. So everyone, take five.
Although the vote we just took was unanimous, do we know if Dan was on the call at that time?
I'm not sure if he got dropped off or not, so we may want to amend the minutes if he was not part of that vote. Is that the way to do it, Peter?
Yeah, I thought, I thought I heard him on the call, so I don't know it. But yeah, we'll want to clarify whether or not he voted. It, you know, nobody would know, it's just a question of seeing whether he voted, and then if he wants to, if he was, if he got dropped part in the hearing, we can clarify whether he would have voted yes or no.
Okay. Yeah, that would be important to clarify that.
Okay, Dan is working his way back.
Perfect. So just saying, guys, take a bathroom break if you need to. We'll be back in five.
Well, this is Rita, and I just want to say that Counselor Smith made me laugh out loud when he that intimated that our, our Tracy might be opening a bar and serving whiskey sours. Just made me laugh, so thank you, Kerry, that was it.
You're welcome. My fridge has gone off, and I think the background noise will be over with now.
And it is whiskey sour season.
I believe that's what I've been told by people that drink whiskey.
Yeah. Dan, are you back on?
Yeah.
Back on.
Of rum raisins with a Scotch, straight up, please.
We'll get back to that, Rita. Okay, Dan, just a couple of questions, on the, on the last vote, were you, were you able to vote aye?
No, and I won't vote aye, because I've been trying to break in for a half hour, and I just thought I was being talked over, but apparently nobody could hear me, so. I have some concerns that I didn't get to address.
Okay. Peter, what's the best way to handle that? Peter, you're on mute.
Well, we're, I think that someone that had voted yes in the affirmative could make a motion for reconsideration, and someone else who voted in the affirmative could second it, and then we could incorporate Dan's comments into the, into the decision.
Cool, because if someone makes a motion two and then seconds it again, then we have our discussion period then as well, correct?
Correct, yeah, we're reopening the the, not the public hearing, I mean, not the public face portion of the hearing, but we are reopening the deliberative portion of it.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion to reconsider, and then we need a second, and that way we can make sure we get Dan's point of view on this as well.
I'd like to make a motion for reconsideration of our vote, so Dan's concerns can be addressed.
Okay. Okay, so we got a motion by Counselor Smith and a second by Counselor Cockram. Okay, so all favor of the reconsideration, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to the reconsideration? Okay, so motion passes our reconsideration, so we're taking it back. Now we can make another motion and do a discussion during that, or we can just, Dan, if you want to just give some of your, your concerns, feel free.
And we want to get Carol back on the call.
Yeah, Chad, could you Yeah, Chad, can you get Carol back on the call?
Yeah, I'm working on that now. Carol, are you there? Okay, I'll be right back.
Thanks for your patience, guys. We just want to make sure that we do this right and do it by the book, and Dan didn't get an opportunity to talk, and that's very important, so. Get back to you.
It's Tracy here again. Really quickly, I just want to point out that that's one of the main reasons why we've asked for a pause in some of this, like, quick, online, public hearing stuff. The technology is very hard for a lot of people, especially in Gearheart where we have spotty internet and skewing an older population that may not be as comfortable with Zoom meetings and such. And, you know, this is, I sit in on a lot of different committees and things, and this is not untypical. You get less public participation in this setting, and so I want to go on record as saying that this is very typical.
Thanks, Tracy. We're in our deliberation phase now. And we're just waiting for Carol. Well, why don't we do this, guys? While we're waiting for Carol, why don't we have Dan give his points, and then we can at least go from there. Dan, go ahead.
Okay. The first one I hope is minor, but it seems to me if we have tennis courts and we have pickleball courts, and we have a beach that people can dig in the sand and dig clams and fly a kite and all those things, whether you happen to live here full-time, live here part-time, or just be visiting, I have real heartburn in saying that somebody can't sell items that would be used in that capacity. I have no problem saying we don't want to surrey shop. We don't want to, you know.
If I could address that.
I guess, you know, you do have to draw a line somewhere, but to me, that's a line that I feel uncomfortable.
And I think they changed that part.
We had more restrictive language in that specifically talked about rentals of sporting equipment and the sales of sporting equipment, and we actually removed those prohibitions from the definitions. And we specifically specified that prohibition is on the rental of the surrey-style bicycle. So if someone could theoretically, there was discussion of, well, would we want people to be able to rent tennis rackets or pickleball rackets or a bike? And I think the consensus of the planning commissioner was yes, that they thought that that was appropriate. But what they don't want is the type of surrey-style bike that would compete with cars. But theoretically, that's why that was specifically called out as prohibited in the other form. So that people would have flexibility to sell types or as part of the neighborhood market. And that rentals will be allowed except this surrey-style bicycle.
Thanks, Peter.
Well, I guess my complaint really is going to be, the next one is, but the harder one, I think, on other people's minds is, in my opinion, variety store and neighborhood cafe should also be outright use. I have a problem with, and the variety store would be where you would sell a lot of the things that I just mentioned. But to me, I don't think it's appropriate to single out some things that are outright used and other things that really should be an outright use, but we want the planning commission to look at it before we say it's okay. And you spend a lot of money to go through the planning commission process, and so anyway, I have heartburn with that part.
The reason that
It seems appropriate, and we have it as a conditional use and should be an outright use.
I can't speak to the reason that the planning commission included the variety store as a conditional use versus outright permitted. The reason they went with the neighborhood cafe was because of serving of alcohol that they, which, you know, when you get that permit, that also allows you to have lottery machines, you know, were preempted by state law on that. That was something that caused a bit of consternation in the past, but I think it was that serving of alcohol that gave them the pause to say, well, maybe we should take a little closer look at that. Of course, you guys could make the determination that it should be allowed outright.
Peter, I think it actually goes back to what Carol initially said about just allowing anything as an outright use, like Cannon Beach does, and I think that's more to what we're talking about here. The variety store and the neighborhood cafe were already a conditionally in the C1. If we were to change that, then that goes to the heart of the comp plan itself. And C2, all of that stuff is already allowed. And remember, like Carol said at the beginning, we're not changing C1 into C2. We're not changing our C1 into Cannon Beach's C1. We're keeping within the current structure of our C1, but allowing those businesses to have more uses. Is that correct, Carol?
Yes, the more tourist-type uses, including a variety store, would be more closely looked at in terms of need and how many are there and their impact. Because they're not necessarily catering as much to residents.
Dan, go ahead.
But the barber shop or the office space or the realty shop or they are, I mean, to me, that's the subjective part that I think is inappropriate. I don't think it's for us to judge whether we need it or not, or whether it's for primarily use of the people that are full-time or if it's used by both full-time and part-time residents, or if it's used. You know, I believe in allowing the almighty dollar to reign and determine if the business succeeds or doesn't. And anyways, that's where I stand on that. We had several, what I would consider to be fairly successful antique stores that both owners just decided they didn't want to be in that business anymore and closed. But they were running those antique stores, both, I know for certain one of them, but I think both of them were just, you know, they showed up one day and nobody said anything, even though they weren't allowed. So I would, you know, to then say now if someone wanted to do the same thing, or heaven forbid, one of those particular owners, of which both are still around, wanted to open their store back up, they'd have to go through a bunch of hoopla to do it. I'm not sure that's appropriate.
All right, anything else, Dan?
No, I think I'm good now.
Hey, great. Thanks for getting back on the line. Would anyone like to make a motion? Apriline, I think you're on mute.
I will make a motion. I'm trying to get to the right page. And I'm going to make the same motion that I made before. And this is for city file number 19-003 ZTA Neighborhood Commercial C1 Legislative Amendments. And based on the findings in the staff report and amended by the city council during our discussions, I move to approve the amendments and direct city staff to prepare an ordinance to amend the Neighborhood Commercial C1 Zone and prepare it for the first reading at the December 2nd City Council Meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table from Counselor Cockram. Do I hear a second? A second. Okay, we have a second by Counselor Smith. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed, say nay. Dan, are you on the
He said nay.
Okay.
Yes, I said nay.
Thank you, Dan. So motion passes four to one. Motion is approved. Excellent, guys. Okay. Thank you for your patience while we had a little do over there. Appreciate it. I'm glad we got everybody on the call. Everybody had a chance to speak. And so next up, we have the second part of the meeting again. And this is to talk about allocating some of these funds from the CARES Act to to our local businesses that are actually in Gearheart. And so for that, we need a declaration of any conflict of interest. I have none. Dan, you said you have a conflict of interest?
Yes, yes, and I will not participate in the discussion.
Okay. But Dan's recusing himself. His business, I believe, is on the list.
I have no conflict of interest.
I have none.
I have none as well. Okay, so here's a deal. So because of the CARES Act, Gearheart has $50,000 in federal CARE Act funding. And we want to discuss tonight how to divide that up. So we could divide part of it up for some uses for the city, and then we could allocate the rest of it to small businesses and Cedar. Kevin Laye has volunteered to allow us to allocate these through Cedar. They're going to be the ones that get the money. And they actually already have eight Gearheart businesses that in the pipeline requesting money. In other words, they already filled out applications in the specifically businesses located in Gearheart. They filled out applications, and they're waiting for money. They're waiting for funds. And now that we, the city, has or will be acquiring our CARES funds, we can use part of those funds to help fund those grants that are already in the pipeline. And something that Kevin Laye requested at the last meeting that we look at, in order to do it, we would just need to make a motion to say, hey, we're going to allocate this much to the city, and we're going to allocate this much to Cedar to divide up among these eight businesses. And Chad's going to talk here in a second about what funds we could use for the city. He's got a few ideas. But one way to divide it up would be, let's say, you know, Chad wants $10,000 for some things that we can do in the city. Then we would have $40,000 left, and if there's eight businesses, that would be enough to give each of those businesses through Cedar a $5,000 grant, if you wanted to divide it up evenly among those businesses. We could also say, hey, we're going to give you the lump money to have Cedar divided up as they see fit. So those are kind of the things that we can talk about and decide. But that's the background. I want to turn it over to Chad, because Chad, I think he's got a couple suggestions with that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. So, you know, when we were looking at this CARES Act funding for the $50,000, we were able to, you know, attribute, you know, some expenses that we had towards, you know, gloves, face shields, gowns, sanitizer, some disinfectant, some neck gaiters, an aerosol disinfectant generator to help clean out our apparatus. And for City Hall, we were looking at just a mobile workstation, you know, which would help us kind of separate ourselves from, you know, from everybody for about $1,000. Plexiglas and a new laptop. And for police, we're looking at face shields, some nitro gloves, hand sanitizer, some digital temp monitors and some wipes. And for Public Works, you know, we're doing a lot more in cleaning the bathrooms, you know, since September, we've done about $2,300 and some masks. So, you know, we're looking at about $20,000 in city expenses for COVID that we would want to work with. And that also includes a new furnace for City Hall that includes some, you know, air scrubbing abilities for what we're dealing with now and the next COVID. So, you know. What was that?
Are you talking about like for ventilation?
Yeah, for ventilation and trying to keep the air clean for our city staff. So we're about $20,000 in with all of that. But, you know, it's important for us to also look at the businesses within Gearheart. And I think that Gearheart could also probably take on, you know, another $10,000 in our budget, just to take care of some of these things. So we have some money available potentially for Gearheart businesses, you know, somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000. So I wanted to talk to you, the council, about what you'd like to do.
But would you be okay then with something like $10,000 for the city to get going on some of that stuff? And then the majority, the 40,000 going to the businesses, trying to get as much to the businesses as possible?
I think so. I think it's important to take care of you know, these businesses. And I think the city of Gearheart could probably absorb another 10 grand. So if we can get 10 grand out of this and then use another 10 grand to take care of the difference, I think we'd be okay.
So would a motion then be, as far as the CARES Act allocation, we would use 10,000 for staff projects, department projects, and then we would allocate 40,000 towards small businesses through Cedar to allocate those funds through Cedar. And then as far as your other $10,000, you want that part of the motion as well, just, or do you want to deal with that part later on?
Well, I don't think we have to be specific, but, you know, I think $10,000 towards the city and 40 to go to Cedar to help our local businesses would be a good call. And I'd support that.
We would want to make sure that the motion specified that the businesses that Cedar was to help are those Gearheart businesses that are identified on the list. Just very clear, because other communities have not shared their CARES Act funds with Cedar. The grant program that Cedar was operating was
You okay, Rita?
Yeah, I'm fine, but I just want to know what businesses there are on the list.
Okay, good, great question. So Cedar provided us with a list of eight Gearheart businesses that that have been in the pipeline. They've filled out the grant paperwork application. They're just waiting for the funds. And so through our CARES Act funds, we can get it to them. The list, though, isn't a public list. We, and that's for Cedar. They just And that's Cedar. They just don't want to share their confidential information. But there's an email of the list, and we can get that list to you so you can see what businesses are on there for sure. But Kevin.
Awesome.
Hey, can I say something? Tracy Williams here as the business owner. Part of this, with regard to the funding available. Am I allowed to comment on this?
Can you make it quick, Tracy?
Well, yeah, because Cedar has very specific guidelines. I've been obviously a recipient of some like PPP funding and things like that, and it's very specific. With respect to the Gearheart funding that's allowed or that you guys are gonna allocate, I would love to know what the criteria is because the Cedar stuff often outlines, like, if you got PPP, you can't apply for the Cedar stuff. And, you know, so I didn't apply for certain things and might not be in the pipeline, but potentially could qualify for some of the funding that might be available through Gearheart separately. So, I do care about this.
Hold on one second, Tracy. So, that's the request that we're making a motion on. The request specifically from Kevin Leahy of Cedar is that they have already received applications from business owners in Gearheart, and they're just waiting to be funded. So, their request for the last meeting, the last discussion we had in the meeting, was to allocate that money specifically to Cedar, to allocate it to those businesses under that application process. For businesses that haven't applied for some of these funds, Kevin Leahy also wanted me to remind everybody that there's another round of funding happening now. And that funding is through Governor Brown and Business Oregon's new stipulations with some of the new shutdown stuff. So, this is new CARES Act funding that's becoming available. This specific funding, the request from Kevin Leahy, was to already fill those folks that have been waiting patiently for their funding. On top of that.
Okay, well, that's not the way I heard Kevin say it when I attended the meeting. But granted, I get that, but, you know, I didn't ever hear how. I do understand Gearheart has line item availability to allocate.
But that's not what we're voting on specifically. We're specifically voting on Kevin's request to facilitate those funds previously applied. Now, that doesn't mean that we may not get more funds in the future, or we may not want to do something in the future, or Cedar might want to do something in the future. But for now, his request is this. And his thing at the last meeting was that he has a deadline because he's got a gap right now, and he wants to get that money to these businesses in need that have already applied and pass the application process.
And Mayor, that is true. That is what he has requested.
So, just because I think the last meeting was kind of confusing. To reframe this, there is a state program, and the state identified either local or regional entities to distribute money with some very specific guidelines, is what Tracy spoke to. Cedar had more than double the amount of applications request than they had the funds. What they've then done is gone to local jurisdictions who have received CARES Act funds that don't have those same limitations on the use of the dollars. You could have your own program if you wanted. You could use it for reimbursement city if you wanted. There's a lot of discretion, as long as the funds are, as long as it's COVID-related and the funds are spent by December 31st. And so, what they have asked is that all or a certain amount of those CARES Act funds be allocated to Cedar to backfill their prior program. So, that was a request made. So, the funds that they allocated previously were not CARES Act funds. They were a separate state fund. And the timeline that they need to allocate them in is separate from the CARES Act timeline, which is December 31st.
Correct. So, that's the request that we're talking about tonight. So, we can make a motion to do exactly what Kevin Leahy is requesting of us because he's going up against a deadline, and he would like to try to get this money to fund these businesses as soon as possible that have been waiting a long time. Or we can, you can not make a motion. You can say, sorry, you know, that's not what we're gonna do. We want to spend these in other ways. And that, I think, is either up to the council right now to decide that. You know, Kevin made a pretty strong case at the last meeting. I would probably go along with his and try to get these businesses that have been waiting a long time funded. And then, as more CARES Act money hopefully becomes available, you know, hopefully, the city would look at other ways to continue to help.
So, am I muted? No, I'm not. So, if I make a motion to allocate $40,000 to the Cedar program and reserve $10,000 for City of Gearheart use in the fight of COVID, would that be a motion that would carry? And the $40,000 is specific for Gearheart businesses that have applied?
And you would just want to say businesses on the list that was supplied by Cedar and Kevin Leahy specifically?
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we allocate $40,000 of the CARES money coming into the City of Gearheart to Cedar specifically for the businesses in Gearheart that have been listed as in need.
Of grant funding.
Of grant funding. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Smith on the table. Do we hear a second?
This is Rita, and I'm sorry, Carrie, because I really want to second your motion, but I really think that all of the money should go to the businesses. So, that's my stand. I think all 50,000 should go to the businesses. Sorry, Chad. Sorry, Mayor, but that's my thought.
That's a very, that's something we could definitely discuss. So, we have a motion by Counselor Smith on the table. If there is no second, we can make a different motion of all 50,000. It's totally up to what you guys want to do. So, do we hear a second to Counselor Smith? Or do we want to reconsider a different motion?
Sounds like it dies.
Okay, so, motion dies without a second. Would someone like to make a new motion?
Well, I move that we give all of the money to the local businesses that are clearly suffering, and Godspeed.
Great. And all you got to say in the motion is that the businesses that are suffering, Godspeed, that are on the list.
God, sorry. Godspeed that are on the list of Kevin Leahy. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we hear a second to that?
I second it.
Okay. Motion on the table from Counselor Fackrell, and we have a second by Counselor Smith. Is there any discussion?
I just want to ask if there is any any ability for us to reopen any kind of application phase since all of the money is going to the businesses?
So, today, there was a new application phase for CARES Act money through Business Oregon and through Cedar. So, as far as the Cedar program, yes, any business can now apply moving forward. And I believe it's $55 million are in that fund that was allocated to start today. If the city in the future, and Peter, correct me if I'm wrong here, but if the city receives more CARE funds in the future, then we can create our own application process if we decide not to go through Cedar like we did this time. Would that be correct?
Right. You know, you certainly could create criteria, and it could be very micro. If we receive further CARES Act funds.
So, just to clarify, then, the application period for this $50,000 is closed.
No, this, and that was what was so confusing about Cedar's presentation is they talked about a program that wasn't CARES Act. It was a Business Oregon program where Business Oregon provided them with a certain amount of money, and then they took grant applications. Those applications were very specific. So, as Tracy said, one of the requirements was that people hadn't taken any prior PPP dollars. And what they were seeking to do is to take this CARES Act, these CARES Act funds are a portion of them, and then allocate them to businesses that they said had applied for that program but had not been funded. So, if we, I don't know about the $55 million they just got or what criteria applies to that. I haven't seen that program yet. If we get further federal funds via the CARES Act, then you have a lot of discretion as a council about how you would want to, how you could allocate the money, and we could certainly come up with our own program.
So, you know, in regards to Gearheart, we have spent, you know, about $10,000 of taxpayer money to, you know, take care of the COVID situation. So, if you wanted to give all of the money to the businesses, which I don't disagree with, but then the city taxpayers would be on the dime for paying for what the City of Gearheart has tried to do to manage this pandemic. I would recommend that the city take at least $10,000, which I can allocate up to $20,000, but at least we can take $10,000 to help us recoup for the taxpayers what we've spent in COVID, you know, response. And then, that leaves $40,000 to the businesses of Gearheart that some have applied for and some have not. And I think that's equitable. I think that's equitable for the taxpayers. I think that's equitable for the business owners. And I think we could, you know, do something that would be good for everybody with that. But government does need to be protected. We need some of those funds to protect our volunteers, to protect, you know, the city as far as the administrative staff, and to protect our, you know, volunteer city councilors. And so, it's a balance.
So, Chad, let me just go back and clarify. Okay, hold on. Tracy, please.
Can I jump on something really fast and just say, I get probably $200 worth of masks from being a member of the Seaside Chamber of Commerce, and I provide those to customers in Gearheart. And so, like, this type of thing, and, you know, COVID, all these problems, like, we should have some Gearheart-related PPE. I mean, it's expensive to do that.
Right now, we're voting on, we're specifically voting on a request from Cedar, and we don't have to do that request, but we do have a motion on the table.
And why I'm saying this is Cedar, the Cedar requirements are very restrictive and may not apply to all the Gearheart businesses.
We understand that. We're doing council deliberation right now, and I'd hope that you would respect that. Thank you.
We totally respect everything you're doing. I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's fine, but, you know, we do have an order for the meeting, and we give every chance to give a lot of feedback, and we appreciate it. But we do have to do a deliberation now, and we don't want to be here till, you know, 10 o'clock to do it. So, guys, let's just kind of reset this a little bit. There are eight businesses in Gearheart that filled out applications to Cedar to get grant funding on a need basis, and they passed the application. Cedar wants to fund them. Cedar is requesting that we give a portion of our CARES Act, $50,000, to help them to help allocate and fund those existing businesses that have already applied. That's the request. So, right now, we have a motion on the table to do that. Our first motion was for $10,000 for the city, $40,000 for that. That died because Rita had a second motion, which was all 50,000 for, to go to Cedar, to go to these businesses that are waiting for their funds. Now, Kevin Leahy gave a presentation at the last meeting. He's requesting this. So, I have a couple suggestions. We can either fulfill his request, and you guys can always look at new funding sources in the future and new application processes. Or we can tell Kevin Leahy that, no, we're not going to fund your request. And if you want, at the next meeting, at your next council meeting, you can decide on something totally different, if you want to. But where we're at right now is Counselor Fackrell made a motion to do all 50,000. We have a second by Counselor Smith. And now, we're in the discussion phase of that. So, is there any more discussion from the councilors on that particular motion?
I think I feel better about the balance between allowing $10,000 to stay with the city for the expenses we've incurred and $40,000 to go to the eight businesses that have completed the applications through the Cedar process. And perhaps I should have just seconded Carrie's motion. But after the further discussion, that's my comment.
And Polina, I agree with you 100%. I think Chad has made a very good point about the money we've already spent, taxpayers' money and additional money that we do need to make sure our departments and our staff is safe. And it sounds like all of those things are really good. So, I would agree with Counselor Cochrane that we should do a 40-10 split. So, we have a couple of choices. We can vote on this, or we can rescind.
I would suggest you just vote, if you want to, you vote this one down because we, you know, I think it would just be a cleaner than trying to rescind it when it's already been seconded, and there's been discussion.
Okay, so, we have a, we have a motion on the floor by Counselor Fackrell. We have a second by Counselor Smith, and this is for $50,000. All those in favor say aye? Is anyone opposed? Nay?
Yes.
Okay. Rita, what's your vote?
I go with the council. I'm opposed as well. Just wanted to state my opinion.
No, that's great, and I'm really happy because that did get us into a little more detail. And listen, to Tracy's point and to others' point, if we fund the Cedar request on this one, of course, the city's gonna be looking for other ways to help small businesses. I mean, that's why we're here, and that's what I'm sure the council is. Okay, so, with that. Okay, so with that, does anyone have a motion, a new motion on the table?
I'd like to make a motion that we take the CARES money, allocate $10,000 to the city for COVID mitigation, and $40,000 to the eight businesses that are on the Cedar list that have applied for relief.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion on the table by Counselor Smith, second by Counselor Fackrell. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so that passes 4-0. With Counselor Jesse is, he recused himself from this, so he's not able to vote. But it passed 4 to nothing. The move. Thanks, guys. This is really big, and I know there's a lot of other deserving businesses that are going to be able to apply. There are a lot of stringent rules as well about how much PPP money you've got and everything else. So, I would encourage everyone to go to the Cedar website, find out what the new rules say. What I've seen, there are some really good guidelines on there that, and I actually shared it on my Facebook page as well, @MayorMattyBrown on Facebook. So, but it shows like how much you can qualify for this new funding, depending on how much you've got for PPP or the idle loan. I think that counts in there as well. But there are a lot of details, and make sure you do. Also, just as a resource, reach out to Jessica and Kevin with Cedar. I mean, they're awesome at answering questions. You know, Kevin's definitely been very aggressive in trying to get this funding to these existing businesses. So, I think he's really, I appreciate that. I don't think he's on the call tonight, but I'll definitely let him know how y'all voted. Then he'll be really excited about that, I'm sure. And to those businesses that are getting the funding, we appreciate what you're doing. We want you to hang in there. We know it's tough. It might be a tough holidays. And so, one thing that we can all do is try to, especially for restaurants and bars that are closed down, is try to buy gift certificates to go. Please try to get food to go, as much as possible, because it's going to be tough for them. And that's it.
I'm slugging.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for wonderful four years.
Thanks, Counselor Smith.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you very much. You've been great to work with. So, appreciate it.
Well, I got to say thank you to everybody, because you guys have been incredible to work with. And I thought this meeting went very well tonight. And as always, everyone's so open-minded to doing the right thing for the community. And I know that the next council, I know Counselor Cochrane's going to, or Mayor Luntcochrane, will do an excellent job. She's already off to a great start. And I couldn't appreciate you guys more. I really have an honor and a pleasure. So, with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Do we hear a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, y'all have a good night. Thanks for everything.
Aye.
Thank you, Matt.
You guys.
Have a good evening all.
Have a great night.
Thank you.